Welcome, everyone. I'm Mayor Mandy Martin, Crammy Township. And I call this Crammy Township Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM on February 14th, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day. This is a hybrid meeting. Some of us are online via Zoom. And some and council proper and staff members and one member of the public is here in the council chambers at the Coventry Municipal Building. As we gather, we would like to formally recognise the traditional keepers of this land and specifically our neighbours of the Alderville First Nation with a formal territorial acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that Crammy Township is located on the Mississauga Ashenabik Territory, the traditional territory of the Mississauga. We acknowledge that the Mississauga Nations are the collective stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity. And that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for years to come. In accordance with bylaw 202017, members of the public are to advise the mayor or the clerk of the use of devices for transcribing or recording the proceedings of an open session by auditory or visual means prior to the meeting. Item four on our agenda, confirmation of this agenda for this evening. The resolution reads, be it resolved, the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting on February 14th, 2023 be approved as presented. Because I have a mover and a seconder, please.
Aye, Arthur.
Second, Ben Igman.
Any discussion? All in favour?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Ben Igman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Have any members of council a declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest to declare at this time? Hearing none. We've had no questions submitted. We move to number seven, delegations. Clerk Holly Grant.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. We are going to ask that you defer the Bill Harris, which is the proposed relief kitchen. He unfortunately can't be here tonight because his grandbaby was born today and he was very excited and he sends his regrets. And he would like to come on the 28th, if that's okay. And we would just defer this for this evening. So the motion will not be that we receive information, but that we defer to the 28th.
You need a motion? Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Move, Ben Igman.
Second, Hamilton.
Any further discussion? All in favour?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Scriber, aye.
Ben Igman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Seven D, PSD Citywide. We will have Jordan Gonda from PSD Citywide join us via Zoom to outline the 2022 Asset Management Plan as required by Ontario Regulation 58817, Asset Management Planning for Municipal Infrastructure. The resolution reads, be it resolved, the committee of the whole received the presentation from PSD Citywide for information. And that committee of the whole extend the allotted time of 10 minutes as per procedural bylaw 202191, section 18, delegation's time limit. If I could have a mover and a seconder, please, and then we will hear the presentation and vote thereafter.
Move, Hamilton.
Second, Scriber.
Mr. Gonda, please proceed.
Would you like me to share my screen or am I? Oh, I see you're sharing it. Okay, yeah, welcome, everyone. Jordan Gonda, program manager at PSD Citywide.
Mr. Gonda, we cannot see you. Can you turn your camera on, please?
My apologies. Okay, welcome, everyone. So I'll begin my presentation, the 2022 Asset Management Plan. Next slide, please. Before I get into the specifics of the plan, I just want to give a brief overview of kind of the purpose of what we're doing here. Asset management as a practice is in place to ensure that your municipal services are well documented, that we can understand what kind of service they're providing. And the document I'll present to shortly will outline that kind of level of service. To summarise, the level of service is really made up of the cost, performance and risk of your infrastructure. So, for example, if you want to spend more money to do more inspections on your road network, that has a higher cost, but it could reduce risk. So everything today is kind of about those interplays of of cost, performance and risk. Next slide. The motivation for doing this is comes from the Ontario Regulation 58817. So as the name implies, it's an act and regulation in place to help create better performing organisations. It's part of the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act of 2015. And this regulation came into place in January of 2018. Next slide. This regulation is made up of a set of staged requirements from 2019 and onwards to 2025. So the asset management programme, it specifies a few key elements in place. I'm showing here that trajectory. So in 2019 was that first requirement, the asset management policy. This is a guiding document that states the roles and responsibilities of staff, of council. It commits you to developing the asset management plan, to updating it. So this policy was already passed in 2019. Where we are today, kind of in 2022, 2023, that's where we get into the next set of requirements. So the first one in 2022 is about a plan just for the core assets at current levels of service. So what that means is, and this is the subject of today, the plan is about outlining what kind of service are you providing? We're not setting targets of where we want to be. It's about currently what we're doing, how we're managing the assets. As you can see in those numbers, it's made up of current level of service, doing an inventory analysis, understanding the kinds of activities you do to it to sustain the service, the costs of those activities, how growth forecasts can impact service delivery. So that's what I'm doing today, but recognise that in years 2024 and 2025, there's there's a few updates. So in 2024, we want to do a plan that covers all assets. The one today, the levels of service is focused just on the roads, bridges, water, sewer, storm. When we get to 2024, it's looking at everything else. So that also includes facilities, buildings, equipment, et cetera. 2025 is then looking at proposed levels of service. So what are the targets? Where do we want to be? What is the costing to get to where we want to be? It's really just summarising the slide here. We're kind of at that beginning of setting, you know, currently the service we're providing. Next slide. All of this work is really about service management. We got to take a step back and recognise that the infrastructure you own all has a kind of purpose. If we don't look after our fire trucks, our equipment, we won't be able to respond well to emergency events. If we don't maintain our road networks, that could impact how goods are delivered. It could impact people commuting. So all this good work is about ensuring that we deliver good services. Next slide. As I stated at the beginning, doing all of this, ensuring that you do have that equipment that's available, that you can respond to emergencies, is again, understanding those key variables, the cost of what you own, what performance it's providing, and what kind of risks you have to mitigate. Next slide. So the remainder of this presentation is a summary of the asset management plan. I'm going to start off by showing an overview of the portfolio. So in the plan, we looked at all of the infrastructure assets owned by the township. I'm showing here from the ones worth the least amount of replacement cost to the most. In this asset management plan, we use the replacement cost. So we make the assumption of if we have to replace a road or a truck, what is the cost to replace something like for like? The entire portfolio of assets comes to 117 million. If you're to split that up by households, it's about 42,000 per household. So it's very unlikely that there'll be a catastrophe where you have to replace everything all at once and everyone will spend 42,000. But recognise that everything you own does deteriorate over time. So that 42,000, that share that every household has has to slowly be paid over time to keep maintaining the the asset portfolios. If we have a good understanding of its state, if we have a good understanding of the activities and possibly one day optimise how we manage it, we can reduce this burden on everyone. Next slide. One of the big indicators for performance and risk is the condition. So an asset in very good condition is one that is performing much better. We we looked at a variety of reports and studies as well as the age of assets. So for the roads and bridges and sewer mains, we did have condition assessments. So we had third-party assessments that gave us condition scores based on the defects that you observe. The other assets are kind of a mixture of staff assessments and age-related deterioration. This information shows that about 49% of assets are in fair, better condition. So as a whole, you're kind of in that poor to fair condition. We can see that, you know, the storm sewer system's in good condition, machinery and equipment's good condition. But if you look at the buildings, parks and recreation and water network, those are generally in a poorer condition state. And that is mostly due just to the age of some of these assets. A lot of the water mains are put in in the 60s. So they are theoretically getting close to the end of their life. Next slide. The next thing we want to do is is try and project out what kind of money we spend over time. So for this, we developed different lifecycle strategies. For the majority of the of the asset portfolio, we just assumed we replace like for like at the end of the life. So if we have a truck with a 10 years useful life, we assume every 10 years we replace that truck. We did develop some unique strategies for the roads and bridges. So for the roads, we developed models based on the activities that staff do. I'm showing an example here on the right, just for the paved roads. You can see we can program in activities like crack ceiling every five years and a reconstruction at end of life. And it's showing that the 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 life that you see is stretched out due to these activities. We did something similar to the bridges and culverts as well. We looked at a bridge condition assessment report. And we modeled in those recommended activities. Next slide. From assuming replacements and assuming the activities for the roads and bridges, we project out what we estimate you should be spending each year. This is showing five-year increments. If we were to take an average over the full life cycle of everything you own, so very, very long term, you can expect to need to spend about 3.2 million per year. Of course, some years will be a lot lower and some years quite a bit higher depending on needs. But as a whole, 3.2 million per year. We found a backlog of 13.2 million. So you can see on that first bar, the light blue, that's the buildings. We have some old buildings, for example, like the arena that are that theoretically have exceeded their useful life. So that is, you know, a big part of that backlog there. And going forward, what we do is we use that annual requirement as the basis for our financial analysis. Next slide. A big feature or conclusion of this plan is that infrastructure deficit. So that's where we look at all of the cost to maintain the network I showed previously, that 3.2 million. And we compare it to the kinds of sustainable funding you have available. So we looked at your taxes and some of the the grant funding you get year over year, like gas tax funding. There's quite a big gap. So we had a total need of 3.2 million, 1.4 million available for funding. So you're about halfway funded. And this is quite typical for a lot of small municipalities is municipalities in Ontario. There's a lot of funding that comes from surpluses, one-time grants, things we don't consider sustainable. And we also recognise that a lot of the infrastructure you own, you actually stretch out the life further than what may be theoretically recommended. Next slide. So keeping in mind that deficit, we put together a strategy to close that gap. So for the tax-funded assets, so that's that's really everything except the the water and the sanitary. We propose that you raise taxes by 1.6% each year. And that allows you to close the funding gap over a 10-year period. For the for the water and sanitary, it's a little different. Water, we increased by the rates by 2.1% per year for 20 years and the sanitary 1.6% over the 20 years. With this in mind, we're assuming that there's no new debt being taken on. And we're also recognising that the sanitary network is fully funded by reallocating debt and the water network is just partially funded by reallocating debt. Next slide. So that's what we come to now are some key recommendations. So we recognise that this plan, a lot of effort went into developing it. A lot of data, we had to make assumptions on costing. We really went quite a ways in improving the inventory, but I think there's still some work that can be done to improve future iterations of this plan. So what we recommend is you continually refine the asset data. So keep doing those third-party assessments for roads and bridges. Those provide really good condition information. We also suggest that you break down pooled assets in the road network and storm and water networks. It just makes it a lot easier to account for quantities and also gives them much smoother funding over time. We we've selected a whole list of other findings in the report to that we suggest operationalising in the the software that we use to to, you know, that houses your inventory. Some of these are improving unit costing, putting in better condition assessments and further reviewing and developing the risk models. Secondly, we suggest you prepare for future requirements of the regulation. So if we look at the proposed levels of service, we might need to do some kind of public engagement. We might also need to develop a more sophisticated financial strategy to show what it takes to get to a proposed levels of service. And lastly, just continuous improvement and review with the plan. It's a living document. It's we don't just develop it once and have it sit on the shelf. We expect that year over year, as your inventory gets refined, you make small updates to the plan. Next slide. Just leaving off on a few considerations, keep in mind that all of this is a snapshot in time. We really only reflected the state of the inventory as of the end of 2022. You can imagine that when we do an update, there'll be another snapshot. So so the state of the infrastructure is constantly changing. Costs are constantly changing. If you get new studies that could support, that would change the outcomes. So it's just a snapshot. But what the plan does do is it provides high-level, long-term insights to managing your infrastructure. So it does show things like, for example, a 13.2 million dollar backlog. It does show what on average you should be spending each year. It also provides good detail on the kinds of activities that the township does to maintain and inspect their assets. The roads, bridges and sanitary use a lot of third-party assessments. A lot of other assets did not have third-party assessments. So when you start getting more third-party assessments, that might give a little more realism to the kinds of projections we see from the plan. And lastly, there is no operating costs in this plan. A more detailed study would be required if you want to understand the true operating requirements. But what we did here is just look at the capital. So that covers my presentation and I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonda. Are there questions, comments?
Jordan, you're a good number hack. I got to give that to you. And I I would say that a lot of this is conjecture more than actuality. One thing that I'm a little concerned about is your evaluation of our Keeler Centre. Calling it an old building is just ridiculous. I don't know that I have to get any more in depth than that, but you, of course, have to make sure you have a job tomorrow, and that's why these numbers are given to them. But as to their accuracy, I I shake my head a little bit.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could respond.
Yes, and I'm not a mister, but it's okay.
My apologies. It's been a long day.
Hey, hey, I this is I get to try this on. I'm gender fluid.
Okay, um, so the big I would say the big flaw with the buildings is, number one, we just looked at the age and we your building's inventory is componentized. So we don't just have one representation of Keeler Centre that is all backlog. We have representations for the parts like the HVAC, the roofing, all those different components. And we just found that those, a lot of those individual components are at the end of their life. Again, if you had maybe a building condition assessment or like a visual assessment of the building, it's likely not all in very poor, but we just have to use what data we have available. So just looking at the age of those components, that's how it falls.
Hi, Jordan. It's Mandy, the the mayor. Can you sort of outline to us how crucial is this in terms of provincial government funding grants? This asset management, how how much of this is written in stone? From your experience, and I'm asking you as a as a consultant.
Thank you. That's a good question. So for the provincial provincial OSIF funding, the the formula-based funding, they will look at the replacement costs of your asset inventory. In the past, they gave funding based on your FIR, your financial information return, I believe, is based on book value, which is more or less an accounting representation. The big change going forward is that they're looking at replacement costs, which is what we represent in the plan. So I think it's very important to have a good, complete inventory with good costing data because that is what would determine the kind of funding you would get. So what is the methodology for calculating the funding is has already been communicated. So it is fairly set in stone that this plan has a a good impact on the kind of funding you'll receive.
So what I'm hearing you saying is the replacement, total replacement cost is the bible? Is that the one we're going with?
Going forward, that's how it is. Again, that, you know, five years from now, it might change, but what the province has communicated now is that replacement cost is what's being used going forward.
I'm sorry, I have another question. So there are 444 municipalities across this province. And I can guarantee you that probably 98% of them have these deficits, right, in terms of replacement costs and capital. And what we're being told should be set aside annually. You know, to for replacement costs. And I know it's a magic figure and it's 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 very idealistic, I think, in terms of the sustainability financially. Should we be doing it? Absolutely, absolutely. And people tend not to do it in the interest of not raising taxes until it really hurts. But somewhere in the middle of this, it's like it's like we've got an ideal, an ideal to the total replacement cost of something. And we just don't have it financially. We're not capable of of replacing everything. It's just not, it's just not possible. It's not feasible. Sorry, that's not your problem. Sorry, Jordan.
Would would you like me to respond to that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so
great.
No, that that's a really good question. It's it's several things. I think what we have to recognise is that the timelines for developing these plans was very aggressive from the provincial government. To get a good understanding of truly what you should pay to maintain your assets and how long they should last and which ones you choose to replace, having that kind of information takes years and years and years to build up. And and that kind of time wasn't afforded. So a lot of these plans were developed quite quickly with a lot of assumptions. So when I cite the kind of deficit you see, you're only halfway funded. That's the reality is probably you're much closer because you wouldn't replace every piece of equipment or every piece of a facility when the useful life is reached as per the accounting books. You'll probably do some kind of maintenance on it to stretch it out. So that's number one is just that as you get more sophisticated in terms of your data, you might have more realism. Number two is that we're making the assumption we replace things at end of life. When you get into the future requirements of the regulation, the proposed levels of service, you might say, well, our service levels, it's unrealistic for us to replace everything when in the books it says it needs to be replaced. We want to do something kind of in the middle, like you said, and that's where you can propose those strategies and and operate in that way. So it's really just kind of those those two points.
Thank you. And I don't I don't mean to hammer you, but thank you. Any further comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Sandra Arthur.
So Jordan, in this, you spoke there of building condition assessments. Do we have any of those here in Crammy? Or how did you come up for each one of these building amounts?
These, a lot of the building assessments, we had insurance appraisals. And we did have there were assessments on the buildings. But they weren't done at a like we didn't get a condition like, we didn't get a condition score and it wasn't really intended to understand the conditions so much, but we do have a breakdown of the components. Kind of industry practice, a building condition assessment, you would have a, someone go out, look at every little component, the eaves, uh, you know, everything. Assign a kind of condition score of those components. Um, but that kind of assessment hasn't been done yet. They're quite costly. I, I wouldn't recommend it for everyone. But perhaps in, you know, in some situations, it's, it's what you want to do.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Jordan, it's Joel Scriber here. Quick question with respect to the best practices around tackling any of the capital deficit. Do you guys make any recommendations with respect to the best way to spend any excess dollars to, to sort of bring those deficits down in particular areas?
Yeah. So we recommend a risk-based approach. So in this plan, we, we did develop basic risk models for the assets. So what that means is if you understand the importance of an asset, maybe its cost, the amount of people it affects, if it fails, and then the chance of it failing, like its condition, we can, we can develop risk models. So what we always suggest is that you spend the money on the high-risk assets first. So things like your bridges, your fire trucks, those things that are very critical. And then the ones that fail or, or ones, sorry, the ones that you don't fund are the, the lower risk assets. So maybe the really small diameter water mains, maybe some of the roads that aren't driven on as much. So you'll never be able to fund everything, but if you can take care of the very high-risk things first, you're in a much better place.
Okay. So thanks for that. And do we have a list? Has this list been created of the, the hierarchy of, of the risk environment for these assets?
We, we do have that. We don't have a full listing in the report, but in your inventory, there is a risk score for every asset. So there, there would be such a list. Yeah.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah. So we, I'm just curious. This may not be a question for you, Jordan. Counselor Hamilton here. It may be Mark or staff. We have an inventory of our assets with these risk assessments. And we have a staff member who's responsible for keeping this up. Is that staff member? Heather. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. As I mean, as a new counselor, looking at this thing, 13.2 million dollar backlog and an annual deficit of 2 million. It's, yeah, it's, you start to wonder how you're ever going to get out from under that. So thank you.
Clerk, CEO, sorry, CEO Holly Grant.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. Heather McCall is our asset management coordinator. So I believe, and Heather is online as well as Rhubop. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Two years ago, Heather's position was funded because we didn't have an asset management program. We had up-to-date legislation, but we didn't have an actual program in place. And that was funded through, once we had it in place, we needed somebody then to maintain it. So Heather has worked extremely hard with the information that we have available. And I think that, is it Jordan? I can't see his. Yes, Jordan. I think Jordan can concur to this is it's only as good as the information that you're putting in. So to say that we have an old Keeler building is based on, you know, the longevity of the roof. So that would be Heather who's put it in to see when the roof was purchased, if there was any replacements to that roof. And I'm just using this as one example. And then how much longer are we going to get out of the roof? And then when do we need to replace it? Much like coming and asking for a plow truck, right? It's, you know, we're out, it's left its life. We've replaced the tires. We've given it a new transmission. We've done this, we've done that. Now it's basically done and we need to replace it. And then what is the cost of that and how we're doing it? So that is Heather's job in the long and short to look after that.
If I may, that is true, Holly. Thank you for that. And like Jordan has mentioned, that this is a snapshot in time. And with the assumption that we would be replacing everything at the end of its useful life. So if we're saying a truck is only good for 10 years, but this is based on the assumption that we will be going out in year 11 and purchasing a new truck. But that necessarily might not be the case. To go back to your comment there earlier, Counselor Hamilton. That the deficit, I know that those are alarming numbers, but again, that, that number is there because there were certain assumptions made. And one of them was that we will be replacing every asset that we own within the useful time, which is not necessarily realistic. And that is true. So this plan is only as good as what information that we put in. And I know Heather is constantly working on updating that information. We try to make the data more effective and the more information we can put in, the more effective replacement cost, unit cost that we can come up with, the more better snapshot we can capture going through this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhubop.
Any? Yes. Mark.
Yes, and for council's consideration also. It, it wasn't coincidental that at the same time that the, the government passed the asset management plan, they also passed the Regulation 37818. That was the comprehensive community risk assessment legislation, which council is considering in the budget this week. That is requirement of by law to be done by 2025, dovetailing into the asset management plan of 2025. So during that asset, during the comprehensive community sys, risk assessment, you look at critical infrastructure, water distribution, electrical distribution, building stock, historical breakdowns, historical emergencies, and then how you are going to address them. So, so that we will have some risk assessments being done in, in any event. And to the points that have been made earlier, obviously, we recognize that it might, a snapshot in time might say that a backhoe lasts for 10 years, but a practical, a practical person would say, well, but how many hours are on that engine? How much maintenance is done on it? And, and how well is it maintained and corrosion proofed and, and all those types of things? So, you know, it's a, you know, some, some, some equipment is replaced in five years, some, some equipment you can get 20 years out of. So it's about collecting that information and then, and then deciding upon what's a reasonable amount of time for that piece of equipment. And, and I think in, in, you know, as Phil can attest with, with now with having a mechanic onboard is now we're getting those assessments done of this equipment. And we're able to, to say, yeah, okay, this equipment is worth keeping and fixing, or this equipment is not worth keeping and fixing anymore. And that's why you saw the sliding charts of say, good, fair, poor, or excellent.
Any further comments? Thank you very much, Jordan. And we will now vote on the resolution to accept for information. All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Thank you, Jordan. You're free to go. Item eight on our agenda, adoption of the minutes. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole approve the minutes of the following meetings. Heritage Committee, November 25th, 2023, and Committee of the Whole, January 10th, 2023, for information. Could I have a mover into second, please?
Move, Benigman.
Second, Scriber.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. That's carried. Item nine, Community Services, 9A, the Quebec 800 Challenge. The Quebec 800 Challenge is a relay running adventure aiming to support young people with special needs by raising funds for the foundation, the Jeunetin in Quebec and the Jack Org Foundation in Ontario. This challenge encourages surpassing of oneself and team spirit and takes place over a period of four days from May 18th to the 21st, 2023. Covering a distance of more or less 800 kilometers through a dozen beautiful regions of Quebec and Ontario. Their convoy of 15 to 20 recreational vehicles will park for a few moments in the city town concerned. The time to change with time to change the runners. Relays are made up of a maximum of five to 10 runners. They have an opening vehicle, a convoy protection vehicle, and a closing vehicle with signal lights. They have obtained the necessary authorization and do not need any road closures. The resolution reads, be it resolved, the committee of the whole received the Quebec 800 Challenge update for information. Could I have a mover into second, please?
Move, Scriber.
Second, Hamilton.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. 9B, Ogden Point Quarry. 2023 operational schedule for the Ogden Point Quarry. Operational schedule for the Ash Grove Ogden Point Quarry located at 176 Victoria Beach Road in Colburn, Ontario. The letter is part of their ongoing commitment to maintaining an open dialogue with the township, Crammy council, staff and community regarding operations. The resolution reads, be it resolved, the committee of the whole received the correspondence from Ogden Point Quarry for information. Could I have a mover into second, please?
Move, Benigman.
Second, Hamilton.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Scriber, aye.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Reports of municipal officers from the building department, chief building official, absence coverage, building report 0223. Don Butler. Be it resolved, the committee of the whole received this report, building 0223 for information. Could I have a mover into second, please?
Move, Scriber.
Second, Benigman.
Don, would you like to address this, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through members of council. It's one of the items that comes up in conversation with many of the adjoining municipality CBOs is what seems to be a lack of building inspectors that are available in the community. In the region, it's recognized by the Ontario Building Officials Association. And there is, there is an ongoing promotion to promote this type of service or career for young people. One of the things that came with my taking this position roughly 18 months ago was an understanding that if I were to re-request any extended time off, I would have in place a form of coverage through our local Pine Ridge chapter of OBRA members. This conversation comes up quite regularly and we have a very good extensive network in there of some retired members who still like to remain active. Up in, we in the building department felt that it was a good opportunity. I spoke with an individual, Mr. Ken Andrews. I explained to him of the kind of commitment that we would require as an on-call as need basis. We came to an agreement that if for some reason I were safe, you fall ill or get injured, knock on wood, I don't, that the, the building department and through the CAO's office, we would be able to contact Mr. Andrews. And he would be able to step in and, and make seamless transition, keep the building department running, which we thought was a good plan to have in place. It's also planned that we have a place that'll be revisited yearly so that every calendar year we'll speak again, see if Mr. Andrews is a keen to revisiting it for another year. But we also have other members. We did this with a good understanding that Mr. Andrews is a very experienced and seasoned building inspector. We have very similar style and I was quite comfortable with selecting him and having him come to this agreement. And it's just some sort of a little bit of planning ahead in case something were to happen so the township could continue to operate smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. I know Mr. Andrews. I reckon, I remember him from being building inspector in Port Hope. And he's been through subdivisions and all kinds of development. He is very able and very reliable. Well done. Thank you. Any, yes, Sherry, Councilor.
Just a quick question. Is, is this the first time that we've done? This is the first time that we've engaged and decided there would be a backup building inspector. I applaud that.
Um, through Madam Mayor and Counselor Hamilton, there has been historically occasions where other building officials have been called in. I don't know the exact extent to under what circumstances. However, I felt that I wanted to have a bit of relief knowing that if I perhaps want to take a vacation, it looks like a week or such, or, or if I was to fall ill, that this would be in place. The other thing was some of the other municipalities around have reciprocal agreements with each other. I know that all we called would hold them in, in Hamilton Township. They have reciprocal agreements where they'll provide cover up if someone needs to be away and so forth. I looked into a little bit of this. It seemed to be a little bit more administration work involved to get these agreements into place because it had to be two municipalities that would have to agree simultaneously as opposed to just reaching out, coming to an agreement concept that would be in place. And it was I essentially agreed upon with the candidate that if and when called upon, he would provide his service. So I think that this was the first time I've done it. I've been here for 18 months now. And I will say that it had weighed on my mind before that there was no one there. But this has come about over the past couple of months and it makes me much more comfortable knowing that there is something in place now. Thank you.
Don, I, I think it was a great idea. I, I just wonder, would he be available? Yeah. Cause I know you, it's just, you don't just get two weeks off.
If I may, through, through the mayor, Counselor Regman, one of the things I, I've, I've been doing building inspections for quite a number of years now. And the one thing I've learned being in this industry is that it's, it's hard to take vacation during construction season. Most recently, I think since I've been here, I just took three consecutive days off. But it's the time of year when I can do this. I also work around a lot of what my family has planned. I have, I do ensure that I get my time away from the office. I have a plan in place that's been already approved where I basically take every couple of weeks, I take a Friday off of one single day, not cruise over the year. But this again was more so just to ensure that, you know, health, accident, anything like that. But I, trust me, I, I take the time I'm allocated. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there is also opportunity to use this man if you get a day or a week where it gets too heavy. Because to tell you the truth, the only ones that work seven days a week and steady are farmers and maybe Phil. But other than that, and I don't think anybody should have to work that hard. So maybe, maybe, maybe we need to ask him if he would be available to, to double up on some of the things that we need doubled up on. Because that's the biggest thing in our past, and I've been here a long time, is the workload that seems to not finish off construction, not get the move-in permit, not get the finished permit on, on a farm building state. And it's because those things are the first ones to get dropped. And so I would not be opposed not wanting to put extra weight on this township. But if we need a man in a secondary position, I would think that would be great.
Yeah, Counselor Regman, yes, I, I'm not opposed to that either. I took my first full 12 months here to get a real understanding of the workload based on the number of permits that were issued. I would be the first one to come forward and say the workload based on permit intake is too I would be the first one to come forward and say the workload based on permit intake is too much. Or I've already kind of put into a planning process of a law, of a longer term plan. Depending on the growth of the town and perhaps maybe multiple subdivisions going at once. You know, and based on the income derived from permits, maybe there'd be opportunity down the road to take on a another inspector. This opportunity we have now, this could very well use be used for this type of application. Mr. Andrews actually approached me approximately two months ago. He came into the office. He asked me if we had any work. He was basically in retirement. He was finding himself to be restless. We know that in our municipal municipality next door, Brighton, the chief building official there took in on a firm to carry out the plan review and inspections of the the new retirement home. But then again, they they serve a lot more permits. So he pulled in that service. So I would not be opposed that if we got to that point where I felt the workload could be offset by having someone come in for a few days or a few weeks, it would be a consideration. We've already put into our budget and allocated for a few weeks anyhow, in case the service was required. So it wouldn't be anything extraordinary over and above.
Well done. All in favor?
Hi, Arthur.
Hi, Hamilton.
Hi, Scriber.
Ben Igman, aye.
Martin, aye. And CEO Holly, could you please introduce our new employee? I'm sorry, I've been remiss. I should have done that at the beginning.
It is with great honor to introduce, and I do apologize for my ignorance because I should have in the public meeting because she was sitting here because she is part of our planning department. Our new planning coordinator, her name is Krista, and I'm going to butcher her last name, McKeithrin. And she comes from Hastings area. Not a lot of municipal background, but she is one smart cookie. So I have no doubt in my mind that, and she has jumped in with both feet and has tackled a lot in the last and didn't run away from us. So which is great. And yes, this is our council, as you can see. Thank you for the warm welcome, everyone.
Thank you for being here. We very much appreciate you. Okay, open forum. Members of the public have three minutes to ask general questions and are not to enter into debate. Please state your name and address for the records. Each member may speak only once. Have we any questions? Seeing none. Oh, Lan, are you there?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. Len Patterson here, Colburn. You guys were talking about your asset management plan and all that, which is a lot of good information. It would, it might be beneficial if you were to use your committees, like for the roads and that, to look at the different roads and which roads need to be worked on. It's just a way for the public to be involved with this decision and on helping to spend or helping to come up with the 13 million that you need. It would just be helpful to have the public involved in it a little bit. Just wanted to know what you thought about that idea.
Well, then that's why we have the committees formed, right?
Well, yeah, we have, we have them formed, but we haven't really done a whole lot, especially for the water and sewage. Seems like a lot of money needs to be spent there, but we, we haven't had a meeting, really. So it's been a year over a year, so it would be nice to get that, some involvement in that with the public. But again, it's up to you guys.
Right. And I think all our meetings are public, as you know, all the councils, committee of the whole, the advisory committees, et cetera. So we do what we can. We had, we had a great crowd out here tonight for our public meeting, which was great to see. So we are always here, you know, and we're always listening. And I think your meet, your committee, the advisory committee meetings, they're being scheduled now. I mean, we just appointed the members to them. And so the Did you hear that, Len? The agenda
Yes.
Notice went out today. So you will be meeting soon.
Oh, okay.
By all means.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions from the public? I'm looking at monitors. Are there, are there any more? No, hearing none. We have no closed meeting tonight. So the agenda says, be it resolved, the Committee of the Whole adjourn at 7:25 PM. Could I have a mover in a second, please?
Moved, Arthur.
Second, Scriber.
No further discussion. I'll let you guys battle it out after. All in favor?
Hi, Arthur.
Hi, Hamilton.
Hi, Scriber.
Ben Igman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Thank you all. Thank you for joining us.